Welcome to the December 3 Fountain Valley City Council Meeting. We have a very full house this evening. I would ask if there's anybody who has difficulty standing that is standing that needs a seat, if others would be so considerate as to provide a seat for somebody who may need that. For the final time, I'll call this meeting to order, and we are going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Patrick Harper. And starting off, our invocation will be Councilmember Jim Kinnon. Please stand if you're able.
Almighty God, as we gather today to serve our community, we humbly ask for your wisdom and guidance in our discussions. May our analysis and decisions reflect the needs of our citizens and be made with justice and compassion. We assemble before you today seeking your insight as we navigate the complexities of our city's needs. Grant us discernment to make decisions that are fair and beneficial to all. May we listen to the voices of our constituents with open hearts and minds. Lastly, I thank you, dear Lord, for the energy and strength that you bestowed on Mayor Glenn Grandis this past year. We so very appreciate his incredible efforts and initiatives that helped advance our great city and community. This we pray, in Yahweh God's name, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you both very much. Mr. City Clerk, we have City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority roll call, please.
Councilmember Constantine.
Here.
Councilmember Kinnon.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Bowie.
Here.
Mayor, Chair Grandis.
Here.
All members are present.
Excellent. And Mr. Attorney for the city, do we have any announcements or any reports at a closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action.
Okay. Bless you. And announcement of supplemental communications. Mr. City Clerk, any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do, thankfully, at the last minute. In regards to item number four, the certification of the election, the results of our voting numbers just came in, so the resolution will be modified to represent in section one that the whole number of ballots cast in the precincts except vote-by-mail voter ballots was 6,211, that the whole number of voter-by-mail voter ballots cast in the city was 23,770, making 29,981 ballots cast in the city.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for that. So I guess if it was any later, we would just, you know, keep going, not trade out. All right. Madam City Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Wanted to inform the public that the Fountain Valley Fire Department will once again be supporting the 32nd Annual Spark of Love Toy Drive. This will benefit local charities and nonprofit groups in our community that provide toys to kids who may otherwise not fully enjoy the magic of the holiday season. Community members may drop off new and unwrapped toys to Fountain Valley City Hall, which is here, Fountain Valley Recreation Center on Brookhurst and Hyo, Fountain Valley Senior Center on Tauber and Bouchard, or Al Fire Department Station 1 and 2, beginning November 20th to December 24th. Also, please join us for a very special City Fountain Valley Tree Lighting Event this Saturday, December 7th, beginning at 4:30 p.m. Fountain Valley Local Organization will be selling food, drinks, and cookies to help raise money. Check out alfountainvalley.gov for additional information or call 714-893-8611. The tree will be light bright after dark between 5:00 p.m. and 5:45 p.m. Come early, don't miss it. We will also have fireworks that night as well. Reminder that we have vacancy for our Fountain Valley Commission Committees and Board, and the deadline for the application submission to the City Clerk is 6:00 p.m. on December 19, 2024. For more information, please visit fountainvalley.gov. Last but not least, the Chamber will host its Holiday Luncheon and Chamber Board Installation on Tuesday, December 17th, at Myers-Skewer Golf Club, beginning at 11:30 a.m. If you are interested in attending, please visit www.fchamber.com. That concludes, thank you so much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have some important events going on this evening, and I was not going to do a Mayor's Message, but after some of the tragic events from last night, I wanted to say a few words. So it's with a heavy heart that I address you today. Last night, our community experienced two tragic car accidents. Our thoughts and prayers are with the families and loved ones affected by these heartbreaking events. In times like this, it's important to remember the heroes among us, our police officers, our firefighters, and our Public Works personnel. These dedicated individuals are the first arrive on the scene, providing aid, securing the area, and working tirelessly to restore safety to our streets. Their efforts go far beyond the physical task; the emotional toll of witnessing such tragedies can be significant. I want to take a moment to recognize and thank them for their unwavering commitment to our community. We see your hard work, and we deeply appreciate the sacrifices you make to keep us safe. As we process these difficult events, I ask that all of us come together as a community. Let's keep the families involved, as well as our first responders and our Public Works teams, in our thoughts. Let them know that they are supported and valued during these challenging times. You know, when these terrible things happen, we sometimes forget the efforts of our city staff that have to go in and, you know, first help the people, then secure the area, and then clean up afterwards, and it's hard on these employees of ours. So, again, I just wanted to take a moment and make sure that they understand how appreciated they are from all of us up here. All right. So with that, that's the Mayor's Message. We're going to now go into First City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Public Comments. Do we have requests to speak?
I have four requests to speak on unscheduled matters. First is Gilbert Diaz.
And just a reminder, in unscheduled items, our council is not able to respond.
Gilbert Diaz.
Come on up. Welcome, Gilbert.
You have three minutes.
I live on Santa Maria Street, and I usually walk my child to Fulton Middle School. There's a green belt in between Santa Maria and Santa Lucia, and usually it's like playing Frogger. It's really dangerous. Everyone's rushing to work, and usually they're speeding by 45, 55, 60 miles an hour. Just want to know if there's any plans to do anything safety-wise, either an island, a crosswalk, a speed bump, anything. It's not only my child that goes there. There's elderly people that walk the green belt, there's other kids that walk before and after school. So it's just concerned that, you know, it's a matter of time before someone gets hurt, and want to know if there's any plans to build something to make it a little bit safer to cross. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There are plans, and we can't discuss them this evening, but we'll make sure our staff gets hold of you with information. Our next speaker, please. Welcome, Vicki.
Hello. Good evening. I'd like to encourage you to support all the union workers who have shown up today and respond favorably to their requests and negotiations. It's not easy for workers, so I was glad to see all the union workers today. On November 5th, the Fountain Valley City Council voted to join OCPA, the Orange County Power Authority. Subsequent developments show that that vote, in my opinion, was premature and not necessarily in the best interests of the city. It should be noted that of all the city councils OCPA has marketed to this year, only Fountain Valley joined. I recommend you look at your options with your city manager and city attorney on how you might rescind your agreement to join, because it now appears that significant material facts about OCPA's financial situation were withheld, had you known you might not have voted to join OCPA on November 5th. OCPA waited, and I see the CEO, Mr. Mosca, is here. OCPA waited until after the vote here on November 5th to disclose around November 25th and 26th that they are under financial duress because of the high prices of renewables. You were warned here by OCPA that their business is volatile and risky. To do your due diligence, you could have waited to see their annual report, which was just published. Quote, "OCPA continues to navigate industry-wide challenges, including significant increases in renewable energy procurement and resource adequacy costs. These challenges, combined with the projected reduction in rate advantages between OCPA and Southern California Edison in 2025, have prompted OCPA to refine its procurement strategies and financial planning. To manage these risks, OCPA may need to consider adjusting its rates and renewable energy portfolio to better balance revenues and costs." Now, OCPA appeared on November 26th, before the Irvine City Council. They were very disappointed at this late disclosure of this information. The incoming mayor said this may be the end of OCPA. I recommend you look at your options. There were material facts, and I assume Mr. Mosca's going to be presenting something, but it appears to some of us that all of this was withheld until you voted to join. So you're now co-owner of OCPA. Their troubles are your troubles. Your troubles are the troubles of Fountain Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Who's next?
Mike Rowe.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Just after you voted to join OCPA on November 5th, OCPA revealed it needs to change its energy mix and financials apparently under duress. At a dramatic Irvine City Council meeting on November 26th, CEO Mosca said, and I quote, "On November 5th, OCPA staff discussed the financial outlook with an out-hawk committee, highlighting the challenges from unprecedented escalating energy costs and identifying opportunities to mitigate these costs." CFO Tiffany Lewis-Lawes said, quote, "Since 2022, the cost of eligible renewable energy, PCC-1, has surged by nearly 400 percent, and resources and resource adequacy capacity prices have more than tripled in three years." Volatile market conditions have driven actual energy costs from $99 a megawatt-hour in fiscal year 2023 to $121 a megawatt-hour in fiscal year 2024, with projections indicating a further increase to about 134 per megawatt-hour in 2025," end quote. She went on to say that OCPA will reduce the renewable energy content to carbon-free, quote, "carbon-free" in some service tiers. This is a downgrade. OCPA is not transparent, and the discussion at Irvine went on for two hours. I suggest you watch that meeting. Irvine Councilmembers were dismayed that this news came at the final session with the current council members, and that the downgrades OCPA was proposing were a big surprise. The incoming Irvine mayor said, "These disclosures look like the beginning of the end for OCPA." Carbon-free has no digital tracking mechanism to tell how much energy is actually produced or where it was sold, so that opens up opportunities for multiple sales. So that opens up opportunities for multiple sales of the same carbon-free energy, so-called. There's no way to tell. People who buy carbon-free energy from OCPA can wind up with electric power that's relabeled as large hydro or nuclear. This makes it even harder to know the energy you're getting from OCPA. It may be dirtier than before. Stay tuned, but it appears to me that these disclosures about financial duress were deliberately withheld until after November 5th, after Fountain Valley joined OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Wright.
Good evening, mayors and city council. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our outgoing Mayor Grandis and our incoming Mayor Bowie. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'm impressed to see our core values up on the wall. I know that's a new addition. It looks really nice up there, along with our city motto, "A nice place to live." And I know there are a lot of people that work in Fountain Valley, that are involved in Fountain Valley, that work really hard to make it a nice place to live, and I'm very proud of every one of them and us. I will remind some people that our motto is not "City of Kindness." It's a wonderful promotion. You had it minted on coins, you give it out. It's a great asset for the city and for recognition of nice deeds done, but on the internet, people sometimes choose to say, "Oh, well, you're not living up to the City of Kindness." I would argue the point that just because my opinions are different than theirs doesn't mean they're unkind. And I frankly still believe the agreement to join OCPA was short-sighted. I may not know enough to really be speaking eloquently about it. I just, frankly, I don't approve. I don't think it was kind of the city to force everyone to join, but I understand the conditions. Again, basically, all I want to say is congratulations to both of you. And 21 years as an AT&amp;T employee, my heart automatically wants to read this and pay attention to it. I'm hoping everyone is working ethically to come to a good agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
I have no further requests to speak on unscheduled matters.
Do we have any requests to speak on scheduled matters?
I do not.
All right. So we are now going to go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar, items 1 through 4, will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless separate action or discussion is requested. Does anybody want to remove an item 1 through 4? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve items 1 through 4?
I make a motion to approve.
A second. We have a motion by Councilmember Constantine, and I'm going to give this one to Vice Mayor Bowie as the second. It was almost a tie there. All right, let's vote.
Items 1 through 4 pass, 5-0.
All right. Again, I'm going to ask, there's some people that are having maybe a little bit of difficulty of standing in the back. If there's anybody who's able to maybe trade some seats with those that might need some help. We have seats up front. If there's anybody else who has any trouble. See, we are the City of Kindness. I love this. Everybody's standing up. Okay. With that, we're going to now move into presentations. So the first presentation is the recognition of our awesome city manager Maggie Lee by the Kiwanis Club, presentation by Gary Foreman. That's what it says on my notes. I don't see Gary.
He was here before.
Oh, can we maybe get Brian? Brian Genneves? He's coming.
All right.
It's a packed crowd here. It's hard to get through everybody. Present, so recognition of city manager Maggie Lee by Brian Genneves.
I'm looking for Gary Foreman in the house. Is Gary here?
Oh, there he is.
There he is. He's coming.
Okay. It's so packed.
That's why I was surprised, because Gary wasn't up here, so.
Okay.
Apologize for the holdup to everyone here.
He's got his hot chocolate in his hand, so.
Of course he does. Of course he does.
Welcome, Brian. Welcome, Gary.
So I'd like to introduce our treasurer and also our Lieutenant Governor-elect Gary Foreman for Kiwanis here as well. So we'd like to go ahead and make a presentation. For our Distinguished Service Award for Kiwanis Club of Fountain Valley, city manager Maggie Lee, we thank you for your service, your dedication, and your unwavering support for the nonprofits of this city here, having grown up here and graduated from Los Amigos High School, who recognize your dedication and service to our club and to the city. So I'd like to present you with the Distinguished Service Award, if we may.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Appreciate all of you. Yeah. Bring it down. Mike, come on down.
Kiwanis members, all Kiwanis members?
Glenn.
Colin.
Colin?
We've got quite a group here.
Turn out.
Maggie, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. First of all, I wanted to go ahead and thank Brian Genneves, our president of the Kiwanis, Fountain Valley Kiwanis, our treasurer, and all the Kiwanis member in the community. It is extreme pleasure to be here and also be a member of this community in itself, to give back to the community. I am very lucky to have this opportunity to be able to volunteer and make a difference in the community professionally and personally. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Maggie. All right. Next. Next is recognition of Mayor Glenn Grandis by outside agencies, but before we do that, I actually have a question for our attorney for the city. Sir, as mayor, if I adjourn the meeting right now, can I stay mayor another year?
I think that's what happens, yes.
Is that what happens? Okay. All right. Little fun. All right. So first, we're going to call up Tina Tran from Senator Janet Nguyen's office. Tina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Tina Tran. I'm here on behalf of Senator Janet Nguyen, and I speak for Senator Janet Nguyen, Mayor Grandis, when I say that it was a pleasure watching you serve this community. It's, you know, the love that you have for this city truly reflects in every decision that you made. And as you step down from this role, I want you to know that your legacy of innovation and compassion is going to guide us for years to come, so we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much. We're looking forward to working with her going forward. Next, we have Michelle Schutz from Assemblyman Tretah's office.
Mayor and city council members, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Michelle Schutz. I'm here on behalf of Assemblyman Tretah. We would like to thank Mayor Grandis for an amazing year. It's a lot of work being mayor, as we see. I didn't go anywhere without seeing you. So I know you had a busy year. You're probably looking forward to being able to take a deep breath, but we really appreciate the fact that no matter what is going on in Fountain Valley, your concern is Fountain Valley and the citizens and everyone here, and that's amazing to see. So we appreciate you, we thank you, and we congratulate you.
Thank you so much. He did so much to help with the playground and all he does for Fountain Valley. And if you see me at every event, that means you're at every event, too, so we appreciate you, too, Michelle. Next, we have Gary Foreman with the Fountain Valley Rotary and the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. Double win.
Mayor Grandis, I'm Gary Foreman, the treasurer of the Fountain Valley Rotary Club. We want to present you with a little token of appreciation for all the great work you've done for us in the city of Fountain Valley over the last year. So, congratulations, sir. Thank you.
It says Rotary, and it says Chamber.
All right. So, Mike.
Good evening. Hope you guys are doing well. Huge crowd. So exciting to be here. Mayor Glenn Grandis, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we want to say thank you for your year of service. You did an amazing job. I'm truly inspired and motivated daily by what you do in this city, knowing that this is, it's a voluntary position, and you give so much, and you give it all back to the city and this community. So, so proud and grateful. So, on behalf of the Chamber, we want to give you this as a token of our gratitude.
Thank you so much.
And I want to take just a second to thank the Chamber. This year, you know, I've said it many times, last year at this time, we were worried about the Chamber as a going concern. We were really worried, are they going to be able to step up and do it? And under your leadership, Mike, and the whole executive team of the Chamber, the Chamber has just evolved into something really great for our city. We're working closely together again. We're working hard together, and a lot of it is your leadership and the executive leadership team. We're excited about the Chamber and what's ahead, so thank you very much. All right. Next, I see Brian Genneves for the Fountain Valley Kiwanis Club.
Déjà vu all over again. Let's get Gary Foreman with me, our treasurer and Lieutenant Governor-elect for Kiwanis here. And Mayor Grandis, I'd like to give you a heartfelt congratulations for, you're well-done here in Fountain Valley. We really appreciate all the things you've done, sacrifices you've made personally, and I know you've got your own full-time job that you do besides, you know, being mayor of the city here. So you're out there showing, you know, what a leader's supposed to do in the community. You make tough decisions when you need to. You know, you support the groups that need to be supported in the city and the nonprofits here. Really, really appreciate that, and especially Kiwanis, because we have you, you know, in our club, and you're one of our most prestigious, longest-standing members, so, you know, we're going to gloat a little bit here on that, and we appreciate that. And also, I'm going to make a public announcement. We're now accepting board of directors' applications from the mayor of Fountain Valley currently, so I'm expecting that at my desk by Monday, so. Thank you very much. So thank you so much, Glenn, and let's give Glenn a round of applause, so.
Mayor Grandis is one of the longest-serving Kiwanis. I believe he's been in the club for, between high school and all, for over 40 years. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Not that I want to correct the President, but it's actually our 43 years I've been in the A.K. family. And I'm very, very proud of that organization. Next, we have, I don't see her, but Brittany Bass from, oh, there you are. Brittany, from Amuse for Autism.
Council, Mayor. My name is Brittany Bass, and alongside me is Andrea Hill, and we're the founding members of the Amuse Foundation, advocating, maintaining unity with special humanly needs and everyone. Additionally, our all-star volunteers, AKA the glue that hold us together, Emma Nguyen and Kong Ta, representatives from the Fountain Valley High School Halo Club, healing autism through learning and opportunity. It is with the ultimate appreciation that we, as an organization, have the opportunity to be here today to express our deep gratitude for Mayor Glenn Grandis. He is a role model, an inspiration, a pillar for growth and inclusion, and someone we consider a dear friend. His leadership, mentorship, and dedication to our community shine through his daily efforts. The support he has given to our organization has allowed us the confidence to continue to learn, grow, advocate, connect, and provide. He offers a safe space for ideas, and he always returns a text message. He makes himself available as a person, a friend, and an honorable leader in our community. We humbly offer this recognition of gratitude from our team and the families we represent with disabilities. We've created a small token of appreciation with a photo book of our annual events and gatherings. It seems fitting that today, December 3rd, is International Persons with Disabilities Day. You've helped to pave the way for inclusion in Fountain Valley. Thank you, Mayor Grandis, for being exactly who you are.
I need five minutes.
And we look forward to working with all of you much more closely.
Thank you so much. I still appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Take a picture, come on guys.
Yes, please. Oh, I'm going to hold this. Thank you so much. Really appreciate this.
And then here's this for you.
Oh, thank you. All right, next, we have presentation to outgoing Mayor Grandis by Vice Mayor Bowie. And you have to be nice, because we haven't voted on you yet, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, he's obviously correct, because when we start out as our first year, we never, you know, we didn't get, you know, things quite aligned. But it's okay, it's okay, because that's what democracy is about, right? You have to share your idea, you speak it out. Who speaks the loudest, you will say, who speaks the loudest wins, right? But usually, it's not me that wins. It was always him. So, as the Mayor, we, you know, the job that he does, we are so blessed not only to have him as a Mayor, but everyone, please give a round of applause to his wife, Mary. I'm here, especially this year. Especially this year, guys at 10, I think there's something that you need to go out for me. I said, why? Because Mary's going to say, you keep upping this more, you hit the door. So, I said, Glenn, no, anytime you need me, I'll be there for you. So, we have learned, you know, to work with each other. So, he has been a great leader for the city and a great Mayor to work with in the last four years. But this is not going to be his last mayorship. He'll be back in three years, I'm sure of it. He'll be back in three more years, you know, if everything goes well, you'll be Mayor again. So, once again, I wish you, you know, today is not the last day, but it's just the beginning of a coming back in the next three years. So, I want to present you with this gavel. So, anytime that you think that I don't conduct the meeting, you know, correctly, just remind me, hey, I used to have a gavel too, okay? And once again, so I want to wish you a great, you know, one year of serving as a Mayor. Now you get to spend a bit more time with Mary, and hopefully, under your leaderships, you know, I've learned a lot, and I look forward to a year of mayorship along with my other council. So, once again, congratulations.
Okay, I guess this is kind of the agenda in front of me, but I think it's my turn to give, I guess, the outgoing speech as Mayor. I also understand, and I think this is the time that I'm able to give my list of pardons to people, is that right? Is that how this works? All right. Try to make a little humor to get through this. So, as you guys know, I hate reading speeches, but I think I have to do it this time. As my term as Mayor of Fountain Valley comes to a close, I want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible journey we have shared and express my deepest gratitude to the residents' businesses and dedicated city staff who make our community truly a nice place to live. Together, we've accomplished so much, from addressing state mandates to zone for 4,832 new housing units, including 2,200 affordable units, to fighting all the time for our local control and to keep our small-town feel of Fountain Valley. We've tackled challenges head-on. Our financial stewardship allowed us to achieve a budget surplus for this year to be used for our much-needed capital campaigns that are coming forward. And we were also able to fully fund all of our capital reserves. That's a major, major achievement for our city. And make an additional $3 million payment towards the city's unfunded pension liability, a legacy of fiscal responsibility that's going to affect generations to come. And this isn't just me, this is all of council. I'm especially proud of the major projects and investments that will shape Fountain Valley's future. We secured a $5 million federal grant for the new fire station. Just think about how much money that's not coming out of taxpayers' pockets, well, federal taxpayers, I guess it is, but it's money coming back to our city from the federal government. We're going to have ensuring that our first responders have the resources to keep our community safe for decades to come. Also, it's important, we don't have any female firefighters. This is going to allow, rightfully so, our city to open up and have the best firefighters available, not necessarily male-only firefighters. We also recently agreed to the Mile Square Park, Sports Park expansion. So, we have, we're still finalizing the entire agreement, but an additional, I think it's 14 and a half acres to our sports park. And that's going to, I'm so excited about this. This is going to change our community forever. It's going to allow us to expand, you know, we, people want dog parks, and I want a community garden, been trying that for years. Now we have a place potentially to put it. We could hopefully expand out our tennis center and move a sports field to the back area. There's so much that we can do that's going to benefit our residents for decades to come with that, so that's really exciting. One of my proudest achievements and achievements, not only for the Community Foundation and the achievements for our City Council, was the universally accessible playground. I know every, yeah. That's something that, quite candidly, myself and members of the Fountain Valley Community Foundation were working on for over a decade, and now it's open, and it is spectacular. If you have not been there, I recommend you go see it. It's in the center of our sports park, and what this allows is for everyone to play together. It's true inclusiveness. So, what we do, we have special apparatuses there that allow people with special needs, maybe a wheelchair or cognitive issues, to play alongside what we call typical kids, and play together and have fun. And I know my wife, Mary, is here, she took the greatest picture during the ribbon ceremony of a young person in a wheelchair and a typical person spinning on that thing together and laughing and having a great time, and the best part of the whole thing, and it's captured in this photo. They don't know that that's special, and that's exactly the way it's supposed to be. So, very excited about that. Next, proud of launching OurFV. So, everybody, you've heard me say it before, FV doesn't only stand for Fountain Valley, it's fantastic or fabulous volunteers, not phenomenal volunteers, fantastic volunteers. And we named this group OurFV, because what it is, is it's collaboration of all of the nonprofits that benefit our community, the sharing of ideas, the sharing of calendars, the sharing of resources. This is something I'm, we've been trying as a city to get off the ground for a long time, and it's come to fruition this year. We also had so many great events by our Parks and Rec Department, you know, Summer Fest, Lobster Fest, all the different fests that we've had this year. The, on Saturday, we have the tree lighting and the menorah lighting at, coming up on Saturday. All of these events, this is what makes Fountain Valley special. So, that, this year, we had so many great events, and I'm appreciative of that. We also elevated civic engagement with the First Class State-of-the-City Event that was back in February over at the Saigon Grand Center, just a first-class event. And what was great about that is, in past years, it was hard to break even or make money or, you know, cover the costs. This year, we, through the efforts of our city manager Maggie Lee, we had a $10,000 surplus that went to the Fountain Valley Kiwanis Club. So, just really proud of that. We also had just a fantastic Mayor's Ball. That was something that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and they were able, again, our Chamber, to raise money for small businesses in our community. And that's really important to me, and it was, again, another phenomenal event. We had so many ribbon cuttings and celebrations, including Welcome Synergy Home Care, Dutch Bros', Creative Ice, Crumble Cookie, Goodwill. We celebrated anniversaries of Pizza Dees, I think it was, is it 40 years or 50 years? Some crazy number of years. We opened up the Orange County Sanitation District, new state-of-the-art building over on Ellis with the first pedestrian crosswalk. So, each of these events reflects, sorry, reflects the vitality and the growth of the Fountain Valley economy. I'm especially proud of our compassionate and proactive approach to homelessness. Through the new Navigation Center partnership with the cities of Westminster and Garden Grove, we've provided real solutions, including wraparound services that help individuals transition to permanent housing while keeping our parks and public spaces welcoming for all. While providing compassionate solutions, we have also begun to enforce our anti-camping laws for those who choose not to accept our services. So, what we're doing is, we're leading with compassion, we're providing services, anybody who's homeless in Fountain Valley, we want to provide a resource to them. If they don't accept it, then we have to enforce the laws, because our residents have the rights too. And we're seeing a change, this is a new change, and we're already noticing an improvement, not just with people not living on the streets, because I just feel for them, it's so cold and, you know, getting into rainy season. But there are also the wraparound services that get them into long-term housing. And we held a town hall on this. We were like, we want to hear from the residents, and it was over 100 people who showed up and gave their feedback, and also learned about what we can and what we can't do as a city. So, I'm the first graduate of Fountain Valley High School to serve as Mayor. I brag about that a lot, because I'm super proud to be the first Baron Mayor. I'm a 44-year resident, and it's my absolute honor to have the opportunity to serve as Mayor of this great city. And throughout this journey, I've cherished the opportunity, connected with residents through town halls, podcasts, the Mayor's Breakfast, Mayor's Messages, onsite booths at city events, you know, listening to the concerns and ideas have been central to shaping the vision and future of Fountain Valley. Megan Wishner is not here tonight, but she's really spearheaded that, and I give her so many thanks for, I don't want to say making me look good, but, you know, dealing with the video materials that I came up with and making it special. To my wife, I owe a very special thank you. Your unwavering support allowed me to dedicate the countless hours needed to attend meetings, events, and everything in between. Your love and understanding have been my anchor, and I couldn't have done this without you by my side. I think you had counted at one point this year during my mayor earlier, what was it? 300, over 3, 340? 384 meetings I have attended in the last 12 months. Not that she's counting, but evidently she is. And to the residents of Fountain Valley, thank you for trusting me with the privilege of serving as your Mayor. To my colleagues on the dais, I want to thank you guys for your collaboration and shared dedication to our community. We don't always agree, but we do it respectfully, and that's something that really distinguishes us, especially from other Orange County cities. We truly are respectful of each other. Doesn't mean we agree, and that's okay. That's, as Vice Mayor said, democracy. And I also want to thank our city staff. We have the best city staff, we have the best executive team. Our employees truly are what make the difference for our community. They are, they are what make us Fountain Valley, and I appreciate each and every one of you. To our volunteers, that's really what makes Fountain Valley special, our volunteers. You guys have done a great job, whether it be Rotary, Kiwanis, Community Foundation, Schools Foundation, there's 25 different nonprofits. You guys make the difference in our community. Amuse for Autism. So, while my time as Mayor is coming to an end, and so is this speech, wasn't supposed to be this long, my commitment to Fountain Valley will never waver. The city will always be my home, and I look forward to continuing to serve and support our community in every way that I can. Here's to an even brighter future for Fountain Valley. I love Fountain Valley. Mary, if you'd come forward, please, honey. All right. I should just stick to the speech in the future. All right, all right. Comments by Administration of Oath of Office to Councilmember-Elect Ted Bowie. And this is for being re-elected to City Council.
Now that we're all positioned?
Yeah.
Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Ted Bowie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemy and foreign, domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State, of the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely,
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation,
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion,
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully,
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties,
Discharge the duty,
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon, of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now it's my turn. I'm gonna raise the correct hand this time.
All righty, here we go. Please repeat after me. I,
I, Glenn Grandis.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend,
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States,
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance,
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States,
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely,
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation,
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion,
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully,
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties,
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bowie, would you like to make any comments regarding the reelection?
Thank you, yes, yes, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, I want to thank you, the resident, the community of this great city of Fountain Valley. You know, people would say, you know, walk up to me and say, Ted, you did such a great job. I say, no, I'm just a jockey, I just make sure I don't fall off the horse, the wager of the resident. So, I want to thank you, the resident, for supporting me the last four years and entrust me and give me another four years to serve this great community. And as you've heard, we swore, we swore an oath, an oath. And been here on council in the last four years, all of us, I think all of us have hold that oath and we will continue hold that oath and serve the great people of this community. You know, like I say, when I first started this, my council members, as a council member in 2020, I said, the American people are very forgiving and very gracious. But other country in the world, as a legal immigrant, that today you could serve, you know, the public, there's not too many. So, I'm so appreciative of that and I'm grateful of that. And once again, I want to thank you everyone and I look forward to serve this community for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I will keep my comments very short, I've already used up all my time. So, I just want to thank the residents of Fountain Valley for trusting me for another four years. As I mentioned, I absolutely love this community and I will continue to outreach and I now want to hear from you. I wanted you to provide your feedback. You know, when we're doing something right, that's okay to let us know and when we're not doing something right, I know we'll hear from you, but it's very much appreciated and again, it's, it's my absolute honor and privilege to be able to serve the city of Fountain Valley. So, thank you. All right, now we go to the election of the mayor and vice mayor and again, I can't just adjourn this meeting, huh? All right, we'll go ahead. So, Mr. City Clerk?
For the last time, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody, all council members have a manila folder up there that has two ballots, one for the mayor and one for the vice mayor. At this point, we'll, we will be voting for the mayor, so please make your selection and sign the ballot and once you have completed that, please turn it in to me, at which time I will announce the outcome. Now, just, oh, do I have gems? You have to get elected first. Got next one. And by a 5-0 vote, the next mayor for the city of Fountain Valley will be Councilmember Ted Bowie. Congratulations. Now, Mayor Bowie, with your permission, I will commence the voting for Vice Mayor.
Absolutely, Rick.
Thank you. Now, we will,
Wait, wait, you know what? You need to switch seats, you're the mayor.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, we will now vote for Vice Mayor for next year. Again, you have a ballot, please make your selection, sign your name, and return the ballots to me.
It is yours? Yeah.
I only have four.
I see, he gave you earlier. Did you get mixed up? Oh, oh, that was yours. I gotta sign it. Is this one mine? Who's signature is that?
That's my, that's my.
All right, we got it. And again, by a 5-0 vote, the Vice Mayor for next year will be Councilmember Jim Kinnon. Congratulations.
All right, I'm gonna do it again, you're the Vice Mayor, sit in the Vice Mayor's.
Any, any more switching, you'll be going out the door and we don't want that. Well, once again, thank you everyone for your vote and Jim, Vice Mayor, I should call, start calling you Vice Mayor Kinnon, it's gonna be a pleasure working with you for the incoming years. My experience with former mayors, once, for those who doesn't know, once you're mayor, you're always a mayor, okay? So, he's gonna be a former mayor. So, my experience with former mayors, Glenn Grandis, has been in great years. Heaven say that is, I think I talked to him more than I talked to my son. You know, because my son, you know, he go to school, he goes up north, you know, on the dorms and I, we hardly see him and the only time we talk is on the weekend, but like I say, like, I talked to former mayor Glenn Grandis more than I talked to my son. So, I have learned a lot throughout the year, through your leaderships, you know, how we communicate, how we handle things, how we've been transparent and truly, truly care and not only concern about our resident, but our staff. Our staff plays such an important role for our city, for what we call a nice place to live. So, it is so important that we continue working in that directions. And for my incoming Vice Mayors, I'll be looking forward to work with my incoming Vice Mayor more often. And I know in the last two years, we haven't been working for a lot because I'm busy, he's busy, but hopefully, these coming years, I'll be, I look forward to work with him a lot more. And not saying that I'll leave you two alone, I'll be calling you two, believe me. So, as for today, I want to make a few comments. First of all, you know, for what we do up here, a lot of it is through our staff that prepare for work. You know, we read our agenda, this executive summary, it is so important, sometime we receive a package that's like 200 pages, 300 and something pages, there's no way we can go through it, given the fact that we have only three days, you know, before a meeting. So, what I usually look is at the executive summary and something that catch my attention and concern, then I go in, in deep with that. So, I want to thank your staff for making those executive summary, it is so important for us to go through a package, so I want to thank your staff for that. So, my goal for the, the years, I want, I'm gonna brush up on a few things. So, I want to continue, do some of the great work that our former mayors have done, is he started with embracing, you know, the cultural diversity and I want to continue that work. I think it is so important, the demographic of this city has changed and it is important that we need to hear everyone because we're policymakers. So, it's so important that, you know, we hear everyone, hear their concern, hear their vision, see what the visions are and work with that. So, I will continue doing that. I will continue to support our first responder. It is so important, you know, throughout the pandemic, pandemic time, you know, hard time, you know, who you call when you, you know, you need help, our first responder. So, I want to continue that effort and continue supporting our first responder. This, the model, the model of this city is called a nice place to live. Why do we call it a nice place to live? Because obviously, that is prior council members, mayors of this city that lay out those groundwork, that was their visions. And we took a note and we will continue that vision. So, I want to thank you, former mayors and council members of this city that select that model, so we have a nice place for everyone to enjoy. So, I want to thank you for their, for their work. One of my pillar that I would like to work more this year is to work closely with the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. Because businesses play such a crucial role for the city. Not only do they bring tax to our city, which we in dire need, that's how we spend all of our expense, you know, when we receive the money, it pays for our staff. So, I'm gonna work with them very closely. What I mean by very closely is, I want them to really be engaged. They need to talk to their business owners who are on there and hear what are the challenges, what we can do as a city, help the chambers, bridge that assistant with the business locally. So, I want to be working with them very closely on that. And, you know, possibly make any policy that would enhance the business or make them, you know, breathe easier, you know, you know the word, cutting any red tape that, that we can't cut, that we allow good cut, so they can, you know, so they won't have to struggle. And lastly, our resident, there's policy for resident too, you know, like ordinance, you know, municipal code, those affect our resident too. And if there's things that, you know, could be improved on the resident's side, we love to hear from you. So, those are, those are the pillar that I would like to work. Other than that, we have a lot of hungry folks here, so I don't want to hold it too long, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt you, we have one more business item to attend to. I need to give you the oath again as mayor.
Oh, that's right. Yes, okay.
Wait a sec, does that mean he's not mayor yet? Wait.
You can come back on down. All righty, one more time, here we go. I,
I, Ted Bowie.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend,
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States,
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies,
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic,
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance,
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States,
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely,
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation,
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion,
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully,
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties,
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, for those who doesn't know, this is my wife, Rose. And my four years of service, I am so grateful for her. I, here's the reason why. We have four kids. I have Charles, Catherine, Christine, and Christopher. And through my four years serving this community, she have stepped up and done everything when I'm away from home. So, I want to thank you for allowing me serving this community and, you know, taking double duty, that means being a mom, business owners, and a wife, that she's trying to. So, I want to thank you for that and token appreciation, this is flowers for you. My apology earlier, when I say Mary, I meant First Lady, First Lady Mary. It was, that was the former mayor, right? Okay, did I miss anything else, Mr. City Clerk?
Just the three or four remaining items that are on the agenda in front of you.
Okay, let me see, yes, okay, all right. Do we have any items for future considerations?
We do.
Okay, Councilmember Konstantin?
Sure. Well, I would like to see the city clerk, and I didn't even ask the city clerk, but I'm seeking a second, that if we could please have the city clerk keep records for the length of a city council member, so sometimes there's a situation with a council member or maybe, you know, there's correspondence that goes to a resident involving a council member, if we could keep the records for the length of a council member and at least like six months after, just in case, because personally, I keep records and I keep really well that. I'm seeking a second.
Can you elaborate, what record are you referring to?
Well, like if a council member receives, let's just say a complaint about a council member, that when the city responds to the resident, that the city would then keep a copy of that and not purge it when we purge records.
So, you reference,
Sometimes we purge after, what is it, a year?
It depends on the records retention policy.
Right, sure. And it's not a big deal, it's just, even though I keep great records, this is for, you know, the benefit of all city council members, because you never know when you're gonna need something.
I think that's a great idea. I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you very much, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Konstantin. Anybody else? Okay, all right, moving along. Successor Agency Housing Authority Public Comment.
We have no requests to speak.
We have no, okay, okay. And let's see, Successor Agency Housing Authority, A B 123. Okay, let's start with former mayor Glenn Grandis.
You know, out of respect to your event this evening, I'm gonna file mine with the clerk.
Thank you so much, sir. Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor, Jim Kinnon.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, in recognition of all of you have been so patient sitting, I will file my record as well, but congratulations.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Konstantin?
Sure. I have already submitted my list. I have already submitted my list, and congratulations, everyone, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Konstantin. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you. I did want to say a few words about Mayor Grandis. You know, I appreciate the time he's been giving to the city this last year. And I got to say, you know, I've worked with several mayors since I've been on the council, and I got to say, Mayor Grandis is by far the most recent that I've worked with.
Thank you, Councilman Harper, I appreciate that.
But really did a great job with outreach as far as, you know, ask the mayor, mayor's message, and podcasts, and really, congratulations on a good year. I'll submit my report to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could. I forgot to thank my mom too, who's watching in Vegas and always watches these meetings, and my sister Linda, love you guys.
Yeah. Well, thank, you know what? It reminds me, I also want to thank you, my brother-in-law, Steve Ross, who flew all the way from Arizona this morning, just coming here to see the renovations. So Steve Ross, thank you for being here, and my sister Lisa Ross, so thank you for both being here. Once again, I'll go ahead and join the meeting, and I'll go ahead and submit my record as well in the essence of time. We have a lot of people standing here since, you know, 5:30, so in the essence of trying to save some time here, I'll go ahead and join the meeting, and I'll submit my record. And our next scheduled meeting will be December 17 at 6:00 p.m. All right, once again, thank you, everyone. Me, I'm joining.